Are we recording it?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Right, start at 6:15, sorry about that. The meeting is called an order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? Turn it over to you, Pat. Perfect. Great, Tiny.
Turn it late.
Pledge of Allegiance.
There's some California plate out there blocking my parking spot.
Your parking spot.
Just kidding.
Okay, for those of you who haven't met me, my name is Pat Brayden. I am one of the Civil Defense and Cross County attorneys for Coonville County. One of the main things we do is ensure that the county applies with the open meetings law and the Public Records Act. And so I've been there for 20 years now. And we have other attorneys that also have a lot of experience there. So we have a lot of collective experience in advising the county on open meetings and public records, how it applies in certain situations, and, you know, what to do if if there's a violation of either statutory scheme. I will say at the beginning, I'm going to go through this in general terms. I did throw in a couple of things that I thought would relate to schools in here, though it's mostly a generic presentation for public entities in general. And so any questions that directly relate to a particular situation with the school district or any school within the district, I would refer you to your own legal counsel. You're certainly free to ask questions about anything, you know, I present, any clarifications of law that you may wish to have have me respond to. So with that, we'll get going. This is a quote from our Attorney General Lawrence Wesson. He is a very strong advocate for transparent and open government. And we're going to start with the open meetings law. So I can see better. Introduction, who was originally enacted in 1974. Before that, a lot of governmental entities met without letting the public in, met in secret and made decisions. And the legislature decided that that was not okay. In 25th, it was the various statutes relating to transparency and ethical government were scattered throughout the Idaho Code. In 2015, one of then-Governor Otter's aides actually put those provisions together as a new title in Idaho Code, Title 74. And the open meetings law is Chapter 2 of that title. The Public Records Act is Chapter 1. There's also a couple of chapters regarding ethics and government and non addressing conflicts of interest and, you know, things that may come before a governing board. Particularly with respect for contracts. But codified the idea that the public's business should be done in public and that any person who is interested in the proceedings should be able to at least watch their governing board make those decisions and see how that's done. It promotes that policy that we have the right to observe our government in action. In some cases, even to speak to the government, although that's not always required in a public meeting. Only when a public hearing is required under specific state law. Policy. I mentioned Title 74 of the Idaho Code entitled Transparent and Ethical Government. And it states right off the bat, it is a policy of the state that the formation of public policy is public business and shall not be conducted in so again, as I said, all meetings of the government body of a public agency and a school district is a public agency and the school board is the governing board of that public agency, the governing body for purposes of the open meetings law. No decision shall be made by secret ballot. And there's also a nondiscrimination provision. Meetings must be at a place where there's no discrimination on the basis of race, creed, color, sex, age, or national origin. So if you want to meet somewhere where women aren't normally allowed in, for example, or men aren't normally allowed, or whatever, that would be a violation of the law. What is a meeting? There's a regular meeting and a special meeting. Any meeting of the governing body of a public agency to make a decision or deliberate toward a decision on any matter. By the way, the terms in yellow and that are in italics and highlighted in yellow are defined terms in the open meetings law. A regular meeting is a convening of the governing body of a public agency to conduct the business of the agency. Those are the ones you schedule on a regular basis, like once a month, once a week, et cetera. Special meetings are meetings where, that are not ordinarily scheduled on a particular date and time, but they're called because there's specific business that needs to be dealt with at a particular time to handle for a regular meeting. And I have the statutory expectations down at the bottom.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If there is an event where all of the board members are to attend, is that a required posting of a quorum when there is no meeting? I mean, say we go to the high school graduation and were there
If you're not going to make any decisions on behalf of the school district or have any discussions leading towards a decision on behalf, you know, on behalf of the school district, then it would not need to be posted. But that is, that is a good, a very good question because it's a topic that comes up often.
Yes, it does.
And so, and so that's the distinction. If you're meeting to make a decision or deliberate toward a decision, it has to be, the agenda has to be posted. Meeting notice and agenda notice as required by law and then the public would be invited to attend. Otherwise, otherwise it would not have to be.
Okay. Does notice of a quorum, even though we're not conducting any business?
I don't think so. I mean, I, nothing, it wouldn't hurt to do so, but I don't believe it's required.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for all, you know, we all happen to show that the skating rink gets staggered times. I mean, we don't have to take notice of that.
One thing on the quorum issue I do want to mention though is, is I would be careful not to discuss school district issues over email that goes to at least a quorum of the members of the board. Because then, you know, then it could be considered an illegal deliberation.
Okay.
What is a public agency? You are one. The state board, that's the state level, and then regional, local, which includes school districts specifically. Any sub-agency of the public agency was a governing body. Members of the public agency which are two or more members, which are five of these, so meets that criterion. Authority to make decisions for or recommendations to a public agency regarding any matter. So the decisions would be the board itself. Any committee you may have or advisory board at any time, they are also subject to the open meetings law. So, for example, you know, if you have a, you know, subcommittee of three members of the board or, you know, a member of the board and, you know, staff, then, then that would, that would trigger the requirements of the meetings law. What is a decision? Any determination, action, vote, or final disposition on any of the above, motion, proposal, resolution, order, or any other measure where a vote of the governing bodies required. Again, it's any of those made at any meeting where a quorum is present. Another exception besides the no business, you know, no official business exception is if there's anything that has to be approved that's just a ministerial or administrative action to carry out a previously adopted decision that was made in an open meeting. Typically, you know, typically, though, those things should be handled by a, either a single board member or staff whenever possible to avoid potential pitfalls. Deliberations are basically any discussions relating to a decision or potential decision. Any matter before you that could lead, that will or could lead to a decision. Pretty much anything you discuss that is official school district business would be considered a deliberation. So be very, you know, very conservative and careful in your application of these requirements. Can a member of a governing board appear at a meeting via electronic means? I originally developed this presentation before the pandemic, so I didn't put Zoom in, but that would be the perfect example. But all members of the governing body present must be able to communicate with one another. At least one member of the governing body or the director or the chief administrative officer needs to be physically present. That could be the chairman of the board, the vice chair, the superintendent, et cetera. But somebody has to be physically present at the location designated in a notice. And that's, that's basically in case, you know, there are members of the public that are physically present. And, you know, we've certainly had, you know, various governmental entities have had more than our share of hybrid meetings, like including the county. So that, that comes up all the time. Communications have to be audible to the public attending the meeting and also attending, I would say, also electronically. That has been an issue at times with, just for, often for technological reasons. You know, we all know, you know, the kinds of glitches we can get using any kind of communications technology. So that is something to consider. If the people that you have on Zoom can't hear, but everybody in the, that's physically present can hear, you may have to consider some alternatives. Whether it's fixing the technological break, you know, you know, taking a recess to get that fixed, you know, continuing the meeting, et cetera. You know, it can be, it can be a pain, but everybody, every member of the public that's in attendance and every member of the governing board have to be able to hear what's being said. And the members of the governing board also have to be able to speak. Notice. For regular meetings, again, those are the ones that are regularly scheduled and reoccur periodically. The meeting notice has to be posted five calendar days in advance. That does not necessarily include the agenda. The agenda has to be posted at least 48 hours in advance. Or you can give notice of the regular meeting schedule once a year and then all you have to post is the agenda notice. Forty-eight hours before each meeting. Special meetings require 24-hour notice. That includes, and that includes meetings that are for the specific purpose of holding an executive session, and we'll get to those in a minute. Anytime you list an executive session on the meeting agenda, you have to state the reason and the specific provision of law authorizing the executive session. And that's Idaho Code Section 74-206, and then there's various subsections. My favorite one is F, of course, because that's the one that deals with heading with the gate.
Mr. Brayden, can I ask a question, please?
Pat, please.
For the meeting notice and the agenda notice, can they be one and the same?
They can be as long as they meet the timing requirements.
Okay. Well, we don't, we wouldn't need to do any posting of meeting notices because we do that once a year. For special meetings, though?
Yes, special meetings have to be, the meeting and agenda notice has to be posted 48 hours in advance.
For a special?
For a special meeting.
Special is 48 or 24?
Twenty-four percent.
Special is 24.
Oh, 24, you're right.
So on the special meeting, the notice, you have to still be of notice, but it's only 24 hours, which is also the timeframe for the agenda.
Yes, that's for the meeting and agenda notice.
Okay. So posting the notice on the agenda is appropriate?
Yes. And necessary. And where you post, in a prominent place, at your principal office, you know, this office, or at the meeting where, if there's no office, then it would be at the building where the meeting would be held. But that's a good idea anyway. If you're going to hold a meeting away from your office, you post the agenda at your office and where you're going to meet. Also, if you have a website, if you have a website, it needs to be posted there too. But there's no, it's not a requirement to maintain a website, just if you have one, you need to post it there too. I also encourage posting on any social media platform where you may be, where the district may be active on the official district's social media accounts. There is also emergency notice. There's a situation involving injury or damage to persons or property, immediate financial loss, or the likelihood of the same. And the normal notice requirements would be impractical or even increase the likelihood of injury or severity of injury. You just try to give as much notice as you can. The reason for the emergency has to be stated at the outset of the meeting. Say, we had a big windstorm and it took the roof off of John Brown Elementary and we have to meet to let a contractor replace that, then that would be like an emergency meeting type of situation. Agendas. Required for every meeting, again, 48 for regular, 24 for special. An agenda is essentially basic, an memorandum of things to be done, items of business or discussion to be brought up. I don't know, I've never seen really any issue with what constitutes an agenda. I mean, I looked at the agenda for this meeting earlier today and it looked fine. And it looks, you know, like the agendas of every other governmental agency around here, so. But I would say it should be specific enough to note, to give the public proper notice of what is to be decided or discussed at the meeting. Any agenda item that may be decided upon by vote has to be designated as an action item. That's a relatively new addition to the open meetings law. It does not require you to take action, it just allows you to take action. If it's labeled as a discussion item, in most circumstances, you cannot take action on it unless it's an emergency. You can, you can amend an agenda if it's, if it's amended and reposted before the deadline to post, excuse me, then you're good to go. It's amended as posted. If it's, if it doesn't meet the 48 or 24-hour deadline, but it's before the meeting, it can be acted upon, but only upon a motion to add it to the agenda at the, at the beginning of the meeting. To make, normally, an amendment made after the start of the meeting can be for discussion only unless, unless an emergency is declared necessitating action at that meeting. Again, the declaration of the emergency and the justification for it have to be reflected in the minutes of the meeting.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, don't be, that's why I'm here.
Thank you. So the first one, all agenda items which may require a vote must be designated as an action item, but you said you may not necessarily take action on that. I'm sorry, can you explain that a little bit more?
Like, well, like if you, if the board were to discuss an item that's designated as an action item, but they decide not to take action at that time, maybe they continue it to another, another week, or maybe they want more public input on a matter or something, you know, then that would be examples of an action item or no action that's actually taken.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Your agenda does have to have the requisite ADA language. We are required to provide reasonable accommodations for people with, that are considered a qualified individual with a disability under the ADA to be able to meaningfully participate in a meeting. We can and should, you know, have them, encourage them to contact the office X number of days before the meeting and give the address, phone number, email address, et cetera, for that. That's so a disabled person can have an accommodation such as maybe, you know, headphones to be able to hear better, for example, is one. Maybe, you know, maybe a large print copy of a presentation if they're visually impaired, for example, just a couple, or, you know, just a way made for somebody in a wheelchair to be able to come in to the room especially, but if it's an older building and it wasn't built to ADA standards at the time.
Have there been situations where perhaps blind people need the agenda in braille? I'm just throwing it out there.
We haven't had that kind of a request, but it would certainly be within the realm of possibility.
Janelle, does our, because I don't ever see the agenda that's posted, do we have the ADA language on it?
Our website's supposed to be able to address ADA situations. So if a blind person needed assistance on the agenda, then there should be a button or something, I can't remember.
Right, but what I'm hearing him say is that that language needs to be on the agenda. The paper.
On the notice or the agenda?
On the agenda.
Yeah, the agenda notice.
Yep.
Not necessarily on the meeting notice, but at least on the agenda notice. And I have plenty of, you know, I have a standard example of language we use at the county that I'd be, that I would be happy to provide if you would like.
Please, that was a much, we need it down. We need to update the agenda.
Records of the meetings. Meeting, all meetings have to have minutes and they have to be made available to the public within a reasonable time after the meeting. You know, at the county, that's usually about a week. Usually takes about a week for the minutes to be completed and then included in the following business meetings so they can be approved or amended as necessary. Who, what, who, what, where, when, why, how. Doesn't have to be super detailed, but it does have to include the basics. Members present, who said or did what, including any motions, resolutions, orders, et cetera. Results of all votes. And if it's a split vote, I would, you know, I would certainly record who voted what, I who voted nay, any abstentions. When it comes to the minutes of executive sessions, yes, there do have to be minutes, but it just, you would just have this authorizing statutory authority, the general subject matter, but not what was discussed. Not what was discussed, that defeats the purpose of going into executive sessions and just keep it real simple. The KIS principle, like I put up here. You don't need to record or transcribe a meeting unless, unless you're specifically required to by law. For example, in the county context, there are public hearings on land use matters where a transcribable record is required. They do have to be recorded and have to be able to be transcribed if needed. I don't imagine most of your meetings would have a quasi judicial, well, I'm sure you do conduct some quasi judicial hearings and I would highly recommend recording those, even if it's not required by law. That's 74-205 there.
Before you leave that, if you could go back for this. We have sometimes lengthy discussions and there's been a kind of a habit in the past of almost transcript recording of the discussion in the minutes. And to me, that's way beyond what's necessary.
It is, it is beyond what's necessary. And, you know, it just basically a summarization of what was discussed and maybe the issues that were discussed. And if there's a specific, you know, a specific, you know, if there are specific opposing views, maybe, you know, maybe that those, you know, you know, they say two members, you know, argued for this and two members argued for that or against this or whatever. I mean, I think, I think that's perfectly fine to put in, but yeah, your minutes do not need to be a near verbatim transcript of the proceedings. You know, succinct, but yet detailed enough for the public to know what was, what's going on. You know, that sweet spot is kind of what you're looking for.
Thank you.
Executive sessions, everybody's favorite. You can have an executive session during a regular meeting, whether it's on the agenda or not. You can also have a standalone special meeting with 24-hour notice with the reason and authority. And sometimes you'll have a, you know, kind of a hybrid special meeting where you'll have items to consider an open session and then an executive, and then also an executive session. I think as long as there's the required notice, reason, and authority, then, then you're still good. We have those frequently with the county, definitely challenged.
So what you're saying is that we don't include an executive session on our agenda? If something transpires either immediately before the meeting or during the meeting that would require us to go into executive session, we are still allowed to do that?
And that is exactly why that is allowed because out of recognition that there could be things that come up during a meeting or even immediately before a meeting that would necessitate going into executive session for one of the enumerated reasons in the statute. And the board should have the flexibility to be able to do that.
I agree. Is there a statute that clarifies that?
It's, it's Section 74-206, the Idaho Code. Yeah, that's the one that deals with executive session. And members of the governing board can be there. Anyone who was invited to be there, such as your legal counsel, you know, department director, possibly, you know, school principal. If you have witnesses, they can come and go as necessary. You know, have them wait out, out in the foyer or whatever and have them come in one at a time and testify, that is allowed. And again, the statutory reference is Section 74-206.
Can I just clarify something?
Yes.
When you go into executive session, I know you need to have a two-thirds majority of the board to enter into executive session. Does that majority need to all stay in executive session? Or can they just call it to have that two-thirds go in and then one of them leave?
One of them can leave, yes. As long as there's a, there was a quorum present when the executive session was called and there's at least a two-thirds majority vote of the quorum present at that time. And it does have, and it has to be by roll call vote.
But there doesn't need to be a quorum for a vote after executive session? If there's, if there's something that's actionable from executive session?
If there's something actionable from executive session, you would still, you would still need a quorum of the board, but it doesn't necessarily have to be all the members that went.
Doesn't have to be the two-thirds majority.
Right. Right, and you can go, come out of executive session and go into open session with a voice vote. And we have to have a roll call to go into executive session.
So those times when we have four people present and we go into executive session, but somebody has to leave, they can and we can come out, you know, they leave halfway through executive session, then we're still good.
As long as, yeah, as long as there's at least three remaining.
Yeah, because we had that issue before. So we didn't know if that person needed to to stay until executive session was over and come out, ask the four that went in or not, so that's good to know, thank you.
Okay, where's my little cursor there? Okay. Why go into executive session? Again, it has to be for one of the now ten reasons that are enumerated in the statute. Hiring for any staff position, that does not include filling a vacancy in any elective office. Evaluation, dismissal, or discipline, or decree complaints or charges against a, a public officer or employee. Anytime you want to acquire a real property that is not owned by a public agency, for, you know, for example, if you're looking at, you know, buying land for an elementary school, you can go into, you know, and if it's a private landowner, then, then that's perfectly good reason for executive session. One that I think is underused sometimes, if you are considering records exempt from public disclosure under the Public Records Act, which is part two of our discussion, you can go, is that exempt executive session for that?
Would, would I, just to clarify, so we would discuss exempting public records?
No, if it's, if it's already exempt from disclosure by law.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we would be going into executive session to discuss why? I mean, I, I guess I don't understand that.
If it's already exempt from disclosure by statute.
Right.
Then you, then you can go into executive session for the purpose of considering those records.
Such as personnel.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's a great example.
Okay.
If you're trying to decide whether it should be this, disclosable or not, it may be, you know, you may have a, a one half, which is consultation with legal counsel.
Okay.
So that, that would probably be the justification for an executive session in that case. And again, that exception, or that reason is there also if you're communicating with the risk manager or insurance provider regarding a pending or imminent likely claim. Also deliberations on labor negotiations, that's the deliberations only, not the labor negotiations themselves, those have to be done in public, as you're probably well aware. How? Motion in second, second from members on the record, individual roll call vote, that has to be recorded in the minutes, at least a two-thirds majority of the quorum present, and specific statutory authority. Some good ideas that aren't specifically required by law, but are, are, I consider best practices, reminding participants of confidentiality, that's the whole reason you go into executive session, recording who is participating, if there's going to be business conducted in open session after the executive session, it's a good idea to give the public an anticipated timeframe, and also update if, if it looks like it's going to go longer, just a courtesy to the public. Labor negotiations, as I mentioned, those are required to be open to the public, applies not only to the board itself, but if you have designated representatives negotiating on your behalf, say the teachers' union, then, then the, the public, that has to be open to the public, or any meetings with mediators, arbitrators, fact finders, et cetera pertaining to the negotiation before you. Notice has to be posted the earliest possible time possible, posted on the front page of your official website, and within twenty-four hours of the, at, at where you normally post agendas for your regular meetings if time permits. Public testimony, if it's to be taken, has to be a separate agenda item. Again, deliberations can be done in executive session, or if you're receiving information about a specific employee, personnel information, that has a direct bearing on the issues being negotiated. All documents exchanged between the parties during such negotiations are subject to disclosure under the Public Records Act. Again, relative, that one's relatively new, or new war at least, provision of open meetings law.
Mr. Brainin, I'm sorry, can you go back to that slide? That, that last part there.
Oops, okay.
So all documents exchanged between the parties during negotiations are subject to disclosure under IPRA, but then if it's under the executive sessions, isn't there statute, statutory language there that says this is exempt from public disclosure?
No, you can have deliberations where you formulate an offer or counter offer, et cetera. Those, those can be done in executive session, but the final end product of that, the offer itself, that, you know, once it's reduced to writing, that is subject to, to disclosure of the public.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was the, that was the buzz of getting, getting shocked when you find out that you violated a provision of the open meetings law, totally inadvertently probably, but, but a violation nonetheless. So, one thing to remember, there, the, the, at the beginning, the strong policy towards conducting business in public means that exceptions are narrowly construed. So if you change the subject to something that's not germane to the executive session or a topic where you cannot be in executive session, that's a violation. Taking any, at final action or making any final decision cannot be done in an executive session. Often, oftentimes what happens, the ex-executive session go back into open session and make the ultimate decision on what you talked about in the executive session.
Would it, would it be reasonable to, like, if we know we have to go into executive session for, say, a student matter? And there's nothing relevant to an employee, however, the way my brain thinks, it could lead to an employee discussion, so would it be prudent just to say we're going in for A and B or whatever those things are, that includes students and employees?
Yeah.
But if we choose not to discuss employees, then we're fine? Or are we required to talk about employees because we stuck it on the executive session reason for going in?
No, you're not, you're not required.
Okay.
In your scenario, to talk about, say, employees, if you have students and employees in there.
Okay.
But you can't, but if you only say students and you start talking about employees, that's where you get into trouble.
Right, exactly.
To differentiate, if we're talking about specific individuals, that's what's covered in the executive session. If we're, if we're talking about information in the generic sense about employees, that would not be executive.
Correct, absolutely correct. Okay, conduct of public meetings, or do we have to let everybody play? Not necessarily. Unless something is, is noticed as a public hearing, you do not have, you do not have to let people speak, that is, is within the prerogative of the chair to let someone speak, but it is not required. You can have reasonable rules to ensure the ordinary conduct of a meeting. I would not discourage other recordings of the proceedings as long as they don't constitute a disruption of the proceedings, if somebody's just standing out in the corner with their cellphone camera recording, wait, let, I mean, that's, that's the easiest.
That would be disruptive to me.
Well.
I know, but I'd be watching it, and I'm nuts.
But, you know, there's plenty of video, there's videos out there on YouTube where public officials are just, you know, your employees are just like, ah, take that thing away from me, can I? You know, have them remove, that's when they get into trouble.
Right.
You know, if, if you just let somebody record, say, hi, you know, we believe in transparency, you can record away, then, you know, that, you know, kind of takes the wind, wind out of people's sails a lot of the times. You can remove someone who's disrupted, I, I know that this has happened, I don't know about Lakeland, but some other school boards around here have had this happen. But it should only be extreme circumstances and after multiple warnings. And if you expect a controver, a very controversial, highly passionate issue to be discussed, you know, feel free to contact law enforcement and, you know, have them, just have a presence there, usually that keeps everybody civil. But don't be unreasonable, arbitrary, compresious, or unduly restrictive.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the definition of disruptive?
Somebody that just, you know, that's keeping the governing board from conducting their business, I would say, you know, people that just stand up and shout out stuff when they're out of order, you know, when they're, either when it's a public meeting and they're not, you know, they don't have the privileges, you know, they don't have the ability to speak out, or even like shouting, cheering, applauding, you know, even, even in the course of a public hearing, that can be disruptive too. So, and that's, that's sometimes an issue, especially with land use matters with the county, when there's, you know, you know, especially a highly motivated, passionate opposition, sometimes that gets a little out of hand.
Yeah.
And we have to keep, you know, we have, we have to tamp it down, you know, through the ways I've discussed, say, you know, the chair issuing a warning, you know, having law enforcement present, that kind of thing.
Do you, Agnes, just, no, just a silly, contact someone's chair.
I do, I do think, at least in the county's case, I think there is a, a bit of a very recent trend back towards more civility, so I think that's an encouraging sign, I hope that's true with school districts and other governing boards as well, because it was getting pretty.
Well, for the school district, we do have a small segment in, well, we shouldn't say small, because it depends on how many people show up, but we do have a segment in the beginning where the public is allowed to provide public input. And, but throughout the entire meeting, there is no other further discussion.
Right.
So.
Yeah, as long as, you know, they're, they're speaking, you know, they're acting in a civil matter, manner, you know, they can be passionate, that's fine, but as long as you're still.
Yeah.
You know, and there's time, a whole lot of the public testimony, you'll allow them to speak.
Right.
And then after that, they have the obligation not to, to just listen.
Right.
Because that's your time, then that's your time to speak. And, and do the public's business. If there is a matter pending before the agency that's of a quasi judicial nature, the term expartee communication can come into play, that's when somebody speaks with the member of the board before the matter is heard in, in a, in a regular or special meeting, or conducting a, you know, a fact finding session outside the scope of the meeting, deviating from the record. The, I certainly encourage you not, not to engage in that normally, if somebody tries to talk to, say, a county commissioner on a land use matter that's coming before them, or they send in an email, you know, our staff is trained, our commissioners and staff are trained well enough to deflect it to our community development department, to put it into the record for the hearing, so they don't, they don't see or discuss it before that. You know, if, if for some reason that happens, then it does occasion, you know, occasionally, fortunately not too often, but the cure is to disclose it on the record at the beginning of the, the meeting or hearing on, on the matter, so that it's out in public and people can testify to it, rebuttal, et cetera. That's different from a, an actual conflict of interest, which may require you to recuse yourself if you feel you cannot, either if you're required to by statute or if you feel you cannot make a fair, impartial, unbiased decision on the matter.
Can you tell us what the meaning of the second fact finding, I forget how it was?
Well, for example, I, I can give you an example, I don't know how that would necessarily apply in a school context, but in a, like, say, in a land use context, that would be like one of the commissioners visiting the property that's under, you know, that's under consideration in the, in the upcoming hearing, and not disclosing that they did that.
And they can do that as long as they have the, the public's allowed to go with them and.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, it should be, it should be a, you know, tied to, a site visit can be a type of public meeting, but just doing it on your own means you, you've gathered facts outside the, the context of the public hearing process, and that's considered expartee.
Could I, could I ask maybe an example of that? Let's suppose you were negotiating for that piece of property for an elementary school. Is there anything prohibiting us from going out and taking a look at that piece of property before we make a decision on whether or not?
No, that's not a quasi judicial matter, that's, that's a matter under your executive authority, and you can certainly do that.
So that's the distinction, whether or not it's quasi judicial.
Yes.
So if we were going to have like a student hearing and we went and met with that student before the hearing, that would be a big number.
Or with, or with, you know, one of the parents, one of the students, or cost you a two for one or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
That, that would be an example of the expartee communication in the school context that would have to be disclosed. Okay, and this, this provision has teeth. First of all, any action taken in violation of the open meetings law can be, would be, can be, would be null and void. There are also fines, you know, if, if you're participating in the violation, it could be up to two hundred and fifty dollars, if you're knowingly violating it, up to fifteen hundred, and if you do it again, twenty-five hundred. And that's, and that's payable by the individual, not the entity, so it's right out of your pocket, so there is certainly a financial incentive to follow this law as closely as possible. Private citizens, though, cannot sue you for, for damages, for violations. If you, if you become aware that a violation has occurred, or you, you are, you're a part of that, you can cure that violation within fourteen days of when the violation occurred. And that, and that saves your action, and you're also probably immune from some civil Any other questions on this segment?
That last item, are we, are we kind of talking about just strictly the open meeting law?
Yes.
So if we don't post properly?
Yeah.
We're subject to that.
Yeah, then an action would, you know, would be null and void, and that, that, that's a case where you, you know, the fourteen days to cure would normally apply, and you probably wouldn't suffer any financial penalties.
Right.
But you'd have to do, you'd have to do your action over again. Okay, part two, the Public Records Act. The Public Records Act is, you know, there's a lot of things in there that aren't necessarily germane to school districts, so I'll kind of gloss over that, but I'm going to hit the major points that, that you need to know. Again, there's a strong, very strong statement of policy right at the beginning of the act, every person has a right to examine and take a copy of any public record of this state, and there is a presumption that all public records in Idaho are open at all reasonable times for inspection, except as otherwise expressly provided by statute. And again, the exceptions are construed narrowly. Just a little run through of the different sections, there's some general provisions, definitions, statute, setting out the right to examine, the general right to examine, how you respond to a request, and then there's several sections relating to records that are exempt to disclosure, from disclosure, and then some more general provisions. So there's those, and that's the Public Records Act in a nutshell, and I know that went by real quick, but there's twenty-six sections, or twenty-three sections, actually. Definitions, that's seventy-four one oh one. What is a public record? Any writing, again, that's a defined term, and it doesn't necessarily mean pen to paper, it could be a paper record, electronic record, that contains information relating to the conduct or administration of the public's business, prepared and used or retained by any state agency, this word salad, independent public. This word salad, independent public body, corporate, and politic, which just means the Idaho Housing and Financing Administration. And or local agency, which includes both the county and the school district. Regardless of physical forms of char- or characteristics, as I mentioned. One very recent addition that, that's from the 2021 session, of, of personal, personal notes that are created by a public official, that's any one of you, that's done solely for your own use and is not shared with any other person or entity, and that's key. If you share it with other members of the governing board or with staff, it does not fall within this exception. But if you do not, as long as you do not disclose it to anybody, it is not, it is no longer subject to disclosure.
Can I, okay, you're going on into this one of writing is, but we've had an issue in the past where we don't have anything that the person's asking for, but then to appease their request, we create it. One simple example is like someone had called and asked or gave a records request for phone numbers of the trustees. We don't have our phone numbers on anything. It would, our phone number would be on our application and run at the Cootin County Elections Office. But as far as anything within the district office, it's not on the website. It's not, you know, our emails are there. But going to the effort of creating a document that says, well, here's everybody's phone number, that, in my opinion, is inappropriate because...
Okay, yeah, and actually the law backs you up.
Okay, good.
I will talk about that in just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Writing, the, the definition of writing is very broad. And by the way, public records are any records of the public entity, whether they're actually exempt from disclosure or not. It's that either it's a public record that is subject to disclosure or a public record that is exempt from disclosure, or, or in some cases even prohibited from disclosure. Handwriting, typewriting, printing, photocopying, photographs, electronics, letters, words, pictures, sounds, symbols, papers, maps, any old technology you might have, new tech, you know, new technology. It doesn't, doesn't matter, they're all public records. Public agency is any state agency or local agency. School districts are specifically included. Any agency thereof, any committee of a local agency, any combination thereof. And again, the word salad, which just means Idaho Housing and Finance. Other definitions that apply, an applicant is someone that's seeking a paid or volunteer position with a public agency, but it does not include anybody whose position is an elective position, even if they're filling a vacancy. Copying is transcribing by any means, as long as the public record is not altered, the original public record is not altered or damaged. Custodian, that's someone, the person or persons who have personal custody and control of the public records in question. And it is very, I think, important to designate custodians of the record, whether it's records held at the district office or any particular school or other facility.
I have a question.
You know, the custodian of the record at Betty Keefe, Records at Betty Keefe for Elementary is blank. So, for example.
What about interpretation of records? So say that the records request is met according to the documents that exist.
Mm-hmm.
But then the person doesn't understand what they're looking for, so they pose a question. Maybe the person they pose a question to understands the question or not, but there's an interpretation given as to what they're looking at, right or wrong.
Yeah, that was actually what I was gonna talk about next.
Okay.
After, after I go through the rest of the definitions, of course. Inspecting is the right to listen, view, and make notes of public records, as long as the public record is not altered or damaged. Person is very broadly defined. Public official is also broadly defined. When must a public record be disclosed? And that's where we'll get to Vice Chairman Grissom's question here. First of all, the, the right to examine or copy means the right to make photographs, photocopies, electronic copies, et cetera, that are in the possession of the custodian. It can be done using equipment provided by the agency or designated by the custodian. Normally, it would be, you know, the agency or a person doing it on the agency's equipment. It also includes the right to a certified copy if, if there's an ability to do so. What you can't do, or you can't make any inquiry of the person applying for the public record with just a few exceptions. You can verify their identity. You can ensure that the requested record of information will not be used for purposes of, of a mailing or telephone list, as prohibited by statute. And you can also inquire as required in order to protect personal information pertaining to motor vehicle and driver's license records. I don't think that necessarily applies here, but it's in the statute. Cannot review, examine, or scrutinize any copy, photograph, or memoranda in the person's possession. You can ensure, though, that the records of the public entity are not being altered, damaged, defaced in any way. But you do need to extend all reasonable comfort and facility so that they are able to fully exercise the rights granted under this act. And you can't, you, you can, there's the ability sometimes to contract with a non-governmental body to perform, you know, finding public records for purposes of disclosure or to determine whether they're subject to disclosure or exempt. Especially in the case of very voluminous records, that could be a possibility. But, but the requirements still remain, and you don't get out of my contracting amount. Okay, you can require that requests be made in writing, that they provide their name, a mailing address, and telephone number, and specifically describe the subject matter, records sought, and a date range for when the records were created. The requesting party has to be as specific as possible and describe the records sought in enough detail to, so that you can actually locate those records with a reasonable effort. And you are able to interact with the requesting person to, you know, sometimes they'll have to put in a very broad request, and you can certainly talk to the requesting person to determine what it is they actually want. And that can help narrow down the records that are, that they're seeking by, sometimes by quite a bit. So you do, you do have that ability. Plus, when they find out what the bill's gonna be for their broad, voluminous request, a lot of times they have a financial motivation to narrow that down to what they really want to. Again, you can maintain such, you know, make sure that the records are not altered in the process of copying or inspecting. You can require that the record, that the examination be conducted during regular office or working hours. But if you do allow, you know, some, someone to examine records after hours, like it's, you know, coming up on five and, you know, once until 5:15 or something, you don't have to let them do it, but if you do, then whoever you have there, whatever staff is there to, to be there while he's, while the person's looking at them is entitled to reasonable compensation, and that can come from, that can come, you can get those funds from the requesting party.
We do have situations where we do have to redact our records.
Yes.
So that in and of itself is altering the public record, but we are required to redact it, so...
Yes. And, and the, you know, and the, you know, the labor that goes into looking at the records and determining what has to be redacted and then redacting them is compensable. You can provide, again, we talked about, you, you can interact with the requestor to help narrow the scope of, of a request.
Okay, yeah, that's where we're, we're, I'm sorry, that's where we're questioning that because you were under the assumption that we can't, from what you were saying, that we can't ask clarifying information because it's under the can't do.
No, oh, but no, I was actually, you know, Vice Chairman Grissom was asking a question, and I, and I responded by saying that can be done.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I have it here, what agencies can do. Provide the requestor information to help the requestor narrow the scope of the request or make the request more specific whenever the response is likely to be voluminous or require payment, so...
Well, when you say that, I mean, should, is it considered ethical if, you know, someone's making this broad request, like, say, someone wants all of the trustees' emails?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's a significant amount of information on top of all the other stuff that goes into it. So is it appropriate for the clerk to say, you know, well, what is it that you're looking for so we can narrow it down?
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can say, is there something specific that you're looking for so we can narrow it down? And, you know, maybe use, use a search to identify only those emails that they really want. But if they come back and say all the emails, I mean, that...
Oh, right.
That's all, any, any, any emails that are not exempt from disclosure for, say, attorney-client privilege is probably the biggest one.
Right.
You know, those would have to be disclosed, and you can certainly, you know, if it's gonna take more than two person hours, which more than likely it will...
Right.
Then you can charge for, for that.
So, Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
If a person, if, if we're present, we present that, a person requesting an excessive amount of information, and we provide them an estimate of what it would cost, and they refuse to pay, they don't, and they don't fall under the, the three criteria for exemption...
Then they don't, then they don't get the records.
So we can refuse to provide the records if they refuse to pay?
Yes.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and you can provide this in electronic form, and I would encourage you to do so whenever possible, whenever the, it is acceptable to do so by the requesting party. You can accept requests for public records and deliver requested records via email. You can disclose statistical information that, you know, unless it's specifically prohibited by law like HIPAA, FERPA, for example.
Well, I have a question. If we don't have the statistical information or whatnot, we're not creating something to provide that...
You're not, you don't have to create something out of whole cloth. And they could request the records where the, that they can derive the statistical information from.
Well...
As long as it's subject to public disclosure.
There had been a request for all of the legal fees paid every year since, from one year, like, 2016 to 2021.
Mm-hmm.
With respect to that request, we don't have anything that has that. However, we have...
You don't have financial records to track your legal, the money spent on legal fees?
Well, apparently not in a total. So we have all the charges, we have everything that we expensed out, but we don't have it totaled per year, however...
You don't have to total it up, but you would have to disclose whatever financial records...
Okay, so just...
Include, you know, payments of legal fees.
Right, so I guess either like the warrant amounts or the actual invoices with the information redacted so that it shows just what was paid, they don't...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Because that's what I thought, but we ended up creating something with totals on there, which was very frustrating because now that in and of itself becomes a record that...
Right.
You know, so it's...
Yeah, I mean, it's not a violation to do that, but you don't have to.
Okay.
You can just deliver, you know, send what, you know, what we may call the law records...
Okay, okay.
For what they're looking for.
All right.
Does, can anybody refill my water glass?
Doctor Lee, you just need a pitcher of water.
Thank you. Okay, you can establish a, and should establish a copying fee schedule. The copying fee schedule cannot exceed the actual cost of copying the record unless a specific flat fee is provided by law and that fee may be charged. And back to what we were talking about, about can you refuse to disclose records if they refuse to pay? Yes, the custodian may require advance payment of the cost of copying.
So, Mr. Brayden, can I clarify? So the cost of copying, would that include the cost of researching documentation, the cost of...
Yes.
Reviewing documentation?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's, that's a very specific statement, so I wanted to make sure it was more broad so that it wouldn't be just specific to copying.
Right. The actual cost can only include administrative or labor costs. If it's for, if there's gonna be over 100 pages of paper records, records from which non-public information must be deleted or redacted, so there's that one right there. Or if the actual labor would exceed two person hours. Thank you very much. It's service from the superintendent. Anyway, and that, those two person hours has to be at the hourly rate of the lowest paid person who can process the request. So you don't, you can't charge, you know, the superintendent's rate of, you know, if the secretary in the office is perfectly capable of handling the request. You can, if, if it has to be run by a, by an attorney to determine, you know, whether something, you know, things are exempt from disclosure or have to be redacted or whatever, though, then that, that charge can be passed on to the requestor too.
Can the, can the rate be the custodian of records where you pay?
Sadie.
Can the rate charged be, be the custodian of records?
If the cust- if the custodian is the lowest paid person that can handle a request, then yes. Otherwise, otherwise, no.
So if the CFO, the chief financial officer, who holds the holy grail to all the financials is the only one that can access those records, can we charge his rate?
Yes. But if there's an accounting clerk under the CFO that can handle the request, then you would charge the accounting clerk's rate. Okay. And then there can be a uniform fee for reproduction of record, electronic records. Again, you can't exceed the direct cost of copying information and let, or the standard cost if you were to sell the same information in the form of a publication or, which shouldn't be any more than the cost of putting together the publication either, since public entities cannot make profit. Or the agency's cost of conversion, or if you contracted out their cost of conversion, if you have to convert electronic records to another electronic form. Say, you know, some, you know, real exotic, you know, type of file that you convert, have to convert to a PDF just to have it able, able to be read and sent, you know, and sent out as a public record. That's... More copying fees. This is when a person exempt is, can be, or must be exempted from a copying fee. All three of these have to apply. That, it slightly contributes significantly to the public's understanding of the operations or activities of the government, not primarily in the requestor's individual interest. And cannot occur if fees are charged because the requestor has insufficient financial resources. So for example, if a news, this is, this and is, by the way, is a recent change. It used to be an or. It used to be just any one of the three, now it's all three. Newspapers, you know, used to like to try to invoke exception one. And, you know, they could be right, but at the same time, typically, you know, a newspaper, at least a ma- major newspaper operation's gonna have the financial resources to pay those fees.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Who determines, or how do we determine what information contributes significantly to the public's understanding of operations?
It's, I mean, it's a judgment call, which can be second-guessed by a judge, but, you know, it's basically a judgment call on the, on the agency's behalf. I mean, you're going to know if something has, you know, is of major public interest. You know, if it's something like that, then it's probably going to at least meet the first criteria and possibly the second. And then the major issue would be, do they not have the financial resources to pay the fees that they would have to pay? Responding to a public records request, the general rule, the default rule, is three days, three working days after receiving the funds, or received the request. That means if you get it on Friday, and there's no holiday the following week, then, then you would have Monday, Tuesday, and you'd be due on Wednesday. If you need more than three working days to locate or retrieve the requested records, which happens often, you have to let the person know that fact, and then you have up to ten working days, or essentially two weeks, following receipt of the request to comply with it. If you fail to respond, then it's deemed denied, and that can have implications for attorney's fees down the road, if you're challenged in court, even if you ultimately produce the records. If there's public records that contain material that's exempt and subject to disclosure, they need to be separated out, and the non-exempt material made available for examination, either by physically separating them out, or through redaction as needed. But you cannot deny a public records request in its entirety just because the record contains exempt material. You have to provide the material that is subject to disclosure. Again, and again, that could cost the agency beaucoup attorney's fees if you don't follow that. Electronic records.
I'm sorry, so if you have, if you can provide those partial records, would you at that point provide them with a notation that, A, these extra things are exempt from disclosure?
Yes, it would be, it would basically be considered a partial denial, and you would explain, you would explain what was, the part that was denied, you know, redacted, you know, redacted information exempt from disclosure under H statute.
Statute, okay.
Yeah. For example, or, you know, or, you know, or, you know, records, you know, records not subject to attorney-client privilege were produced, the ones that were, were not. So if you have electronic records, and you have to convert those records to another format in order to disclose them, and you cannot do that within ten working days, you can take longer than ten working days to produce them, at a time mutually agreed upon between the requesting party and the agency. And the parties are required to consider any limitations related to the process of conversion, or to having to use a third party to do the conversion in determining an appropriate timeframe. Again, as I was talking about just a minute ago, if you deny a request or a partial request, you have to provide notice to the person of the denial or partial denial, statutory authority, the person's right to appeal the denial, and the time periods for doing so, and also state that the agency's attorneys reviewed the request or had the opportunity to do so and chose not to, which I do not recommend.
So if, I'm sorry, can you go back, please? So if, if we are going to partially deny certain information, we should automatically contact the attorney? Is that what you're saying?
I would say, if it's a, if it's a routine thing where the, where the distinction is obvious, it's something you do all the time, I don't think you have to call the attorney every time, but if it's something you don't see often or haven't seen before, I would most certainly do so.
It's just that phrase there?
Right, yeah.
It's a state that the attorney has reviewed the request?
Yeah, or had an opportunity to consult, but chose not to do so. As long as you have that language there, you're covered on that one. I was just, you know, kind of going giving examples of when you should contact an attorney and when you may not have to.
Okay.
Because I know, unlike the county, you guys have private counsel as your legal counsel, and so those fees can add up. Okay. The, people sometimes try to use the Public Records Act as a substitute for discovery or other legal process through the courts, and they're not, they were allowed to deny a request if it's more appropriately obtained through a discovery request, a subpoena, et cetera. Okay, now, now we've gone through the rule, now we'll go through the exceptions. And again, it's already 7:30, and it's kind of, a lot of exemptions don't specifically apply to school districts or counties for that matter, so I'll try to go through them as quickly as I can, and certainly answer any questions you may have on the way. Public record is exempt from disclosure if it's required to be exempted under other law. Couple examples there, again, HIPAA or FERPA. There's also other state laws that preserve confidentiality of certain records. Certain court records are exempt if, for example, if they're in a sealed file, or the document itself is sealed, or you say a bench memorandum or a draft decision that the judge is working on, or the judge's law clerk. Law enforcement records regarding motor vehicle commissions, they are required to be provided. You know, for example, if, you know, somebody driving a Lakeland school district vehicles involved in a crash, the district would be invited, entitled to a complete unaltered copy of that report, both the immediate, the initial report and the final report. And your insurer would be, also be entitled to that. Government facilities, any records that, you know, you know, a bad guy might be able to use against a school building or school district building, evacuation plans, escape emergency response plans, vulnerability assessments, security codes, blueprints, operations plans, et cetera, or having to do with electrical HVAC or telecommunications systems, those are all exempt from disclosure, provided, you know, disclosure would jeopardize the safety of persons or the public's safety, and I think it's fairly self-evident that all of them would, especially in this day and age. Human Rights Commission records are exempt from disclosure with certain exceptions. Personnel records, only, only the categories of personnel records that are shown here are subject to disclosure. All other records are exempt from disclosure, and certain ones are actually prohibited from disclosure without the employees or applicants' written consent, and those categories are listed here. Basically, any number of individually identifiable characteristics or numbers. And again, this, this information is actually, is not just exempt from disclosure, it is actually prohibited from disclosure. Certain personnel, or certain records can be, can be disclosed, but only in a abbreviated, redacted format. This is actually a relatively recent addition to the Public Records Act as well, and I think a good one that reflects common practice anyway. One that's certainly relevant to schools and school districts, in identifying minor children by initials. That's in records that are disclosed to the public, not, not internal records that are exempt from disclosure, where the student, you know, student's full name can be, can be spelled out. Again, you know, to, any record disclosed to the public, dates of birth should be in the XXXX, or literally XXXX. You wouldn't put, like, May 1st of 1998, or whatever, you would just put XXXX, 1998. Last four digits of a financial account, last four digits of a driver's license number, state-issued ID, or employer identification number, taxpayer identification number, et cetera. And that's pretty standard, like in both state and federal courts nowadays, where that did not used to be the case.
Because it says may be disclosed, can we just redact it in its entirety? Would there be a reason why we would have to give those?
It's, it's an option, it's an option given, so you wouldn't have to disclose the entire number, or whatever.
No, I know why.
But, yeah, but, yeah, if, if the information is too sensitive, you know, so too sensitive to disclose to the public for whatever reason, then you would just redact it in its entirety.
Okay.
Okay. There's certain, names can only be disclosed in certain circumstances, you know, particularly, you know, names of five finalists for a position, or the entire list if there are fewer than five, unless they're classified or merits of some positions, in which case, they can't be disclosed without the applicant's written consent, unless it's for a background check. So, but, you can copy your own personnel records unless, except for materials used to screen and test for employment, if those are used. Retired employees and public officials, home address, home telephone numbers, and other membership records are exempt from disclosure, along with records maintained by the Public Employees Retirement System of Idaho, which I am also part of. Personal financial records are generally exempt from disclosure. Health-related records are generally exempt from disclosure, not only by these examples here, but also, you know, obviously records subject to HIPAA. Even if they're not subject to HIPAA, they should be kept confidential, and only disclosed on a need-to-know basis where the person's subject to the rec, that's the subject of the records. Again, that's what I just said. You know, unless, unless somebody's doing a background check for a concealed weapons permit, that's the only exception. Workers' comp records are generally exempt from disclosure, except in certain circumstances, including, including the process to determine accommodations under ADA for an employee or somebody who's been offered a position. Or if the person's allowed, allowed records to be disclosed. Okay, and then there's the trade secret exception. That, that most often applies to contracts with information technology providers, but can't, can't apply to any intellectual property where there's actual or potential independent economic value for the information, and there have been reasonable efforts made to maintain its confidentiality. You know, sometimes, sometimes though the contract itself will say confidential, and, you know, that doesn't necessarily govern and may, you know, be, may consist of reasonable effort to maintain the confidentiality of the trade secrets in the contract, but the terms of the contract itself, you know, you know, X, you know, Microsoft is going to provide these services to Lakeland Joint School District for this amount, over this amount of time, that's all subject to disclosure. Property acquisition and procurement. Records relating to the appraisal of real property before it is acquired, that is exempt from disclosure. That goes hand-in-hand with the executive session, allowed to consider purchasing real property. Any estimate, estimate prepared by an agency that details a cost of a public project until bids are opened or the contract is awarded. You know, for example, the engineer's estimate to build X elementary school, you know, while you're going through the bidding process, that, that engineer's estimate is exempt from disclosure, because we don't want bidders finding that out, and then bidding exactly the engineer's estimate. Insurance records, if you have a, records of a self-insurance program or risk retention program such as ICRA, that's prepared to, for purposes of settling a claim, or in anticipation of litigation, with a, with just a couple of exceptions. You know, settlements agreement are not exempt from disclosure unless a court seals it, for example. Or, you know, if they're otherwise discoverable under the appropriate rules of procedure, then they're to be requested in accordance with those rules. This does not limit attorney-client privilege or work product. And other, other types of insurance records are also exempt. Computer programs are exempt. This also goes hand-in-hand with the trade secret exemption. It doesn't include data that's, the property of the school district that's on the, you know, that's contained within the computer program provided by the IT provider, but the program is in itself. Prohibitions on distribution of public records. A general rule, no agency may distribute or sell a list of persons for use as a mailing list, or a telephone number list, without first securing the permission of those on the list. Now, this, we really need to pay attention to this, how the language is parsed out, though. If you have a list of persons, say, employees, addresses, you know, mailing addresses or telephone numbers, you cannot, you cannot disclose that. But if there is information that is disposable, that has that information, they can use that, you know, they can inspect those or copy those and then make a list out of it. So how effective this really is is questionable.
Your Velcro, it's giving me... Sorry.
And that, you know, that doesn't include, you know, their, their business, their business numbers or extensions cannot be, or can be, and typically are disclosed, but, excuse me. But, say, individual, you know, like, if their personal home phone numbers or cell numbers, if you have a list of those, they are not to be disclosed to the public without the person's permission.
Did you say something back there?
Well, I think we're good. I was thinking of that superintendent report where people redacted their phone numbers and didn't put them on, the parent advisory group.
Oh, okay.
They said it was okay to put their emails, that was public records.
Right.
It would be subject to public records, but they gave them permission for their emails, but I took off their cell phones.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, and that, that was, that was, I think, very prudent to do. Yeah, and, yeah, and that, that was, that was, I think, very prudent to do. There are certain exceptions. One that applies to the county's registered electors. And others I don't think would remain here.
Can, can we safely assume that mailing means old-school mailing?
Snail mail.
Was it called snail mailing?
Yeah.
Can we assume that in that term?
Yes, I think you have to assume that. The legislature has not chosen to add the word, add the words electronic mail or email at this time, so. So it only applies to snail mail at this point. Any list used to give notice is disposable. Student directory information to military recruiters, in accordance with federal law, is not prohibited. Again, if you're required to give the information under federal law, then that, you know, that would supersede any provision or prohibition state law anyway. But the state law recognizes that, that, and allows that to be done. When do you have to disclose a record about a person to that person? Normally, most of the time is the answer there. Even if the record is otherwise exempt from public disclosure, if, if the person that it's about is asking for it, they can get it. Investigatory records don't apply if they're otherwise exempt. Anything that's work product, that's information compiled in reasonable anticipation of civil litigation, that's not otherwise discoverable, adoption records. Records are specifically exempt from disclosure as against that person, and one having to do with prisoners. Okay, if somebody's, a person, person can request amendment of a public record, and then the agency has 10 days after receipt to either make the correction, or inform the person to, of the refusal to make the requested amendment, and then, and then also indicating their right to appeal that decision. And appealing or refusal to amend is the same as procedure contested denial of a public records request, which is the next topic coming up anyway. If the denial was considered, if the court finds a denial frivolous, then the agency can be required to pay the requesting party's attorney's fees.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So what if, we'll say, the board, because it's a little bit different, public official records requests for board email, and the information that was given and interpreted was incorrect, and it was requested that it be corrected publicly, since it was a public record, and that did not happen? So it doesn't, I mean, doesn't that follow, even though it would be the board, there's no differentiation between some other record within the district, or the board's email, or the board's whatever documentation we might have, if it went to the public and then was interpreted for the public incorrectly? I'll use mine, for example, there was an email that was interpreted as to be something from me, and it was not from me, and I had nothing to do with it, but...
Okay. Was, was the, were the contents of the email itself incorrect?
The application of it being my email directly from the tech, head tech department, yes, was incorrect. The email, what happened was, the email was given to the public, the public asked, whomever it was, asked for an interpretation of what they were looking at, it went back to the tech department, the tech department altered the record for exhumination, and then gave it back to the requesting party, and then that's what was given to the public.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, that's what I said. And then it was supposed to be, you know, I would have liked it to be, I mean, we're a little over, but I don't want to see this repeated, and being that you bring it up, I just want to make sure going forward that that should have been remedied.
The, yeah, yeah, you, any, you know, I mean, you or any of you could have requested that that, that the record be corrected, and I think, you know, for future reference, they should not be altering the original record to provide an interpretation of that record, that interpretation, if you choose to give it, should be in a separate document.
Yeah, I agree.
So. Okay, the Public Records Act does provide a remedy for denial or refusal to disclose a public record, but it only gives one remedy, and that's to file a petition in the district court to compel the agency to disclose the records. The person, the aggrieved person has 180 calendar days from the mailing of the notice of denial to bring that. Responsible pleadings and hearings are to be set at the earliest possible time, which may not be real soon, with the court's, with the court's caseloads, as they are these days, but they do put priority on those above as many other types of cases as they can. Required to keep all documents or records in question and violet until the end of the appeal period, and normally, the attorney for the agency provides the, the records that are being disputed under sealed to the court, what they call in camera, which just basically means to the court in chambers without disclosure to the, to the other party until a decision is made. The agency is either, the agency's response is either go ahead and disclose the records in question, or justify why you didn't. Again, the court would, would normally examine the records in camera, again, without representatives of the agency or requesting party present, and then the court would make its, its decision. If it was, if it was justified, enter, the court will enter an order supporting the decision refusing disclosure, and returning any items of which were submitted in camera back to the agency without disclosing the contents to the, to the requested or anybody else. If, if the court finds the refusal was not justified, then it would order the agency to make the request to disclosure, and then would consider the issue of attorney's fees and costs. If it finds the request refusal to provide records was frivolous. Now, I will say, there have been several cases where the Idaho Supreme Court has found that the non-disclosure was in fact frivolous, and that's even happened when the records requested were not provided, whether they were actually actively refused, or they just took too long to disclose them. But did disclose them ultimately, but still got hit with attorney's fees for not disclosing them timely. It would, and not, and without justification. So it's important to pay attention to the timelines. Work with the requesting party if you're getting behind, like, say, you know, we could really use another couple, we're going to disclose the records, but we could really use another couple of days to get them, are you okay with that? A lot, you know, a lot of times they'll say, "Yeah."
And if they say no?
Well, if they say no, then you gotta do what you need to do.
Okay.
To get them done in time. And, you know, the statute provides, you know, a couple of different, you know, circuit breakers, you know, first, you know, the three days to the, three working days to the 10 working days, and then electronic records more than 10 days, you know, if you have to convert them, and they're voluminous, and all this other hoo-ha, which can happen. And the other, the other thing to remember about this, too, is that if you're, if you're going to deny a request, or refuse to turn over documents in part, or redact documents, you must justify every, every, every redaction, every withholding of documents, every denial of a public records request must be justified under one or more of the exemptions that I've listed. You can't just say, in general, request denied, Idaho Code 74 to whatever. You know, especially if you are disclosing some records, you have to justify every, every denial with, with the lawful reason to do so.
But a, a general, like, if we're redacting documents, multiple documents, due to a specific statute under the exemption?
Yeah, if they're, if they're all...
You would just state that the redactions are pursuant to...
Yes.
Whatever, and leave it at that, you're not going by each redacted thing?
No, you are. You have to be, you have to be able to, but you, yeah, you, in your, in your notice, you know, you can, you know, for example, you could say, you know, personnel information redacted under such and such statute, you know, you know, other information, you know, sort of information that's, you know, required to be redacted under proposed, you know, under the statute, for example.
Okay, Brandon, you were saying...
So if there's more than one basis for denial, you have to list, you should list each one.
Right.
If there's only one basis, you only have to, you only, or for redaction, if there's only, you know, one basis, say personnel information, then that's all you need to have, so. And then if, you know, if the, if the court also finds that the refusal was closed, was done deliberately and in bad faith, the public official would have to pay $1,000 civil penalty to pay in the agency's general account. That's probably going to be the least of your problems, if that's the case.
Pardon me, if it's, if it's against the board, let's just say, would this be against the board, or the custodian of records?
Depends on what the judge says. But the, the flip side of that is if you act in good faith, attempting to comply with the provisions of, of the statute is, that you cannot be held liable for any loss or damage based on the release of a public record that is governed by this statutory scheme, as long as you act in good faith, in attempting to comply with the provisions of the statute. In other words, somebody, you know, says, you know, "I was, you know, defamed because of this information that you disclosed to the public," it's like, well, you know, we, we complied with the statute, we don't have to pay you any money for your damages. And of course, the best evidence to that good faith is when you consult with an attorney for the agency whenever possible. So, that is the end of a long presentation, and I appreciate your patience, and I appreciate your questions, they're all very good ones. Do you have any other questions that you may have?
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, yeah, Roseanne already has a copy, and you got, you're free to distribute that as you see fit, so, you know, board members, superintendents, staff, et cetera.
If you could forward that to all of us, that would be awesome. Please, thank you.
Yeah, because I didn't have questions, but they were way back at the open meeting, that's why I'll go back and I'll read this slide.
What was your question?
As far as, well, it had to do with the deliberation.
Uh huh.
I was just trying to go through the list that you had there, and sharing documentation, you know, maybe something comes in, and, you know, it's going to be for the meeting, or maybe it's just an FYI thing, something's coming up, and...
You can share documents, but you cannot discuss them.
Right.
So that, that would be my answer to that question. And certainly you'll be able to go through the list when you get a copy of the presentation. Anything else?
The email, is that what you were talking about?
Yes.
Well, if someone were to send, if someone outside of the board sent an email to the entire board, and the information they had in that email needed clarification, could you ask a clarifying question on that, what, the information that they provided? I mean, you're not, but in response, I mean, like, if you're just saying, can you, can you clarify this for me, because I don't understand what you're saying?
I think you could, but I, I would ask the person to respond only to you.
Okay, so ask the question...
And then you could discuss that.
So that everybody sees the question is not appropriate?
Yeah, you could say, I got, tell them, "I got a clarification on, on such and such issue, and we'll discuss it when we, you know, when, you know, when it's on the agenda."
Okay.
That's how I'd handle it, because it's, comes real, the more you interact with the person as a board, you know, and, and that kind of thing, the more it starts looking like a deliberation.
So you think that deliberations are asking questions?
The more, again, the more you, the more you, asking questions is part of the discussion.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay, okay.
And like I said, the more you interact with that, that person, the more it looks like a deliberation.
Okay.
So that's why I would advise doing so individually, and then discussing whatever you receive.
Okay.
In an open meeting. Last call, going on, going twice, sold, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Great information.
I will give you back.
Did you get your thumbs dry?
Yes.
Did you get your thumbs dry?
Yes, I did.
Can we stop recording?
We'll terminate the meeting, 8:01.
And I may have to stay later, too.
Good job.